Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, February 7th at 7:00 PM. And I'm going to call the regular Board of Trustees meeting to order. I have a short invocation is that, Father, we ask you that you give us the guidance, wisdom, and discernment in our decisions to do what is best for our village and its residents. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Thank you. Item two is review and approve minutes from the regular board meeting of December 6, 2022.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Brian, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Is any discussion, corrections, amendments to the minutes as presented? Hearing none. All in favor of the minutes as presented, saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item three is comments from the floor. Opportunity for residents to make the board aware of topics, issues, opportunities either on or not on today's agenda. Is there anybody in the audience that has something to bring up during this time? Hearing none. We'll go on to item four. Code violations at 235 Monroe Street North. Request for state fire marshal inspection, discussion, and approval. This is possible, so...
Can we discuss before a motion?
Yeah, you can go ahead.
Yeah, I'll drive this. First of all, this has come through the public safety for a couple of years now. I think we might have mentioned it, this location way back when we were looking for a conditional use permit, and I think we had some other issues why that didn't happen. But really, this overall has been going back and forth with our fire marshal, Mike Peruka, who's here tonight, and Brian Wertz Inspection Agency, and the representative there is Tony Fernhelm, who's here also, who came on site and did the most recent inspection of the location back on last week, February 2nd of this month. So we have a number, and you guys probably remember the letter that our attorney has sent to them back in June of 2022, that referenced, I believe, a 30-day issue statement of cleaning up the activity and performing some of the inspection, completing some of the building inspection requirements that were required upon them way back when our fire marshal inspected the location. You were all sent, I think, the most current information as far as the past inspection. So we just want to update you on some of the history behind it. We'll start, first of all, Mike, you want to come up and talk about what the inspection detailed and some of the results you had, and some of the direction that we can talk more about it, what Drew stated in his letter to us afterwards? Thank you.
My name is Mike Peruka. I'm a fire inspector for the St. Hudson Fire Department. Coming back, backstory of this property. We first started inspecting in 2016. Since then, we've done 24 inspections, seven annual inspections, 17 re-inspections, and on six occasions, Mr. Galicki was not present. Kind of bringing it forward a little bit. The most recent inspection was set up by Luke, one of the tenants. That was possibly a side conversation after a public safety meeting. Nothing was ever set in stone. There was a little confusion between ourselves, Brian Wertz's office, and the police chief of when it was going to be. We eventually got it set up through Brian Wertz Administrative Assistant. When Luke called Chief Spielman, he advised him that Lee needs to be the one setting up these inspections, as he is the building owner. Just like tonight, Lee's not present. Since then, it's been a long list of violations, generally between 10 and 15 violations per time we've gone through, and generally, it's the same issues. Much of the electrical is in need of replacement, repair. There's questionable egress in certain locations of the building. The conditional use permits are not in place. The list goes on. On the last inspection, kind of the big things were, again, the electrical. Seems to be something that comes up every single time. There's still issues with extinguishers, egress, and conditional use permits. Just kind of shortened it up from the long list that was sent out. Back last year, we spoke with Lee. Lee had requested to shorten the list down to make it more manageable for him. We came up with five things that were agreed upon by Lee to have corrected by the 30 days. That list included having the electrical system looked at by a Wisconsin licensed electrician, extinguishers all mounted and annually inspected, having exit lights and emergency lights all properly working, and there was an odor of gas in the building that was determined to be leaking from a fireplace in the upper level.
So our statement on the agenda tonight was to talk about a state fire marshal. I would like to still keep that a possibility, but we also have further discussion with our fire chief of Hudson, Drew, and he sent the letter to us, kind of explaining that we have control locally to do this activity through Brian Wertz's agency, through our fire marshal, and Mike. We have activity to do this locally, to make the stoppage of work within the building until it's approved.
We can do that without having the state fire marshal come up?
Do you want to comment?
Yep. So Chief Spielman and I had a conversation with Rick Sommerfeld, who is the area representative for us. He advised us that we have the same power that he does. That we, as the HJ, have the authority to issue a stop order.
So I did talk to our police chief tonight, this weekend. I'm sorry, he's not here tonight. He's in training. But we had, he said they had made a lot of improvements. Still a lot more to do, to be honest with you, and some of the, some things that Mike called out definitely are a concern. Drew, the fire chief, said he's issued a, not, go ahead.
So we have a standing order for our department issued by Chief Spielman that we do not enter the building under any circumst, under any circumstances in the event of a fire. So this will be a strictly defensive fire, and we'll just fight it from the outside.
As a public safety chair, that's a concern for me, of course. But there is, the chief and I discussed it on Saturday, Friday and Saturday, and, you know, there's a possibility, you know, we did issue the letter from our attorney, and of course, nothing was met in that timeframe. But there was a possibility of opening a window for more additional time to have them complete some of the activity that we have left here. And that's one of the things I'm throwing out to the board if it's a possibility. But we'd have to get, leave here tonight with a firm date as far as when for them to complete their work. We cannot, it's been two years since I've, you know, seen this go through, and I know, Tony, if you want to add anything else additionally to this at all? You might have to step up. Sorry, Tony. What's your name, Tony?
My name's Tony Fireholm. I work with Brian Wertz Inspection Agency. And I guess our issue is that they did a lot of the work without permits, and a lot of the work they did does not meet code, current code.
Okay. And you guys all got the list of progress from me, of course, so. Any general questions from the board?
I have a question. At what point would this property be condemned? When we're talking about the carbon monoxide exceeding the limits, the question about if the floor or the floors are even stable, the electrical being exposed, and then what was just stated by our inspector that it didn't, it doesn't meet code. When does it get condemned? Who makes that decision?
That's why we're here tonight.
So we decide if it's condemned?
It's part of our ordinance, is what we were told by our fire chief and by our, you know, as we can make that decision here.
Doesn't the, wouldn't there be a recommendation from the building inspector or the fire chief that it's level, it should be condemned?
We've seen that, Mary, for some time now.
I haven't seen a statement that the building is condemned or should be condemned.
The key there is condemning or versus just not being able to conduct the current work, a stop work type activity, where it's sort of giving them time to make the changes to it. Before that work can continue again, they'd have to show us that they completed all the work that was required by these gentlemen here.
So a condemnation usually means that it can't be entered, though, until that work is completed?
Well, the discussion we had with the state fire marshal, according to Drew, is we would, we would tell them that they could complete the work inside by the licensed contract, or licensed, you know, work, but they just couldn't conduct any business in it.
Is this a historic building or not?
Yes.
A national historic building?
I believe it is.
That I'm not sure.
It's on the register.
It's on the register.
All the shopyard buildings are on the register.
I think we had this before it was, yep, yep.
National.
We've requested a copy of something, saying that it is part of the Historical Society's registry. We haven't received any notification yet.
Right. And one of the other biggest things is that there's been no conditional use permits requested or issued for the whole, you know, I mean, for any of the work that's going, that's taking place down there.
Correct.
And that's definitely a violation.
And part of the conditional use would be bringing the building up to code.
Correct.
Absolutely.
Correct.
I mean, other than the roof, I think the walls and wall, the window replacement, et cetera, but, but the walls and stuff are structurally sound as far as, I mean, it's
They've got holes.
Pretty robust building, but I mean, it definitely needs some most TLC.
Yeah, there has been some question of the integrity of the roof. We've seen pictures from Google Earth. Brian had a picture from the neighboring building that showed tarps and pallets on the roof. I don't know what it actually looks like.
There's a statement that it's considerable items are stored in the upper portion, and that it's unknown if the construction of the building is reliable enough to support the weight of those materials.
Correct. So they have storage of old mold material from Milestone. There's chairs, there's unusable items. It's just all thrown in piles in the upper level. I honestly don't know if that's even considered a usable space in that building or not.
So was that, was that statement in this report meeting that there's concern that the, the place where it's stored, if that floor or ceiling is stable, is it?
Correct.
So the, there is a question if the building is stable?
Amy?
Yeah, I have a question. Since at our last public safety meeting, this final, our most recent inspection had not been completed, was there any change in the volume of work done and/or whether it was done by licensed contractors as compared with the other times that we presented the owner and the people working there with requirements months and/or a year or so ago?
Well, Tony hadn't been there prior, but go ahead. Well, you want to comment?
Just kind of a general statement, because I just, for the people that are new to this story, part of the problem here is that as long as I've been on safety and before that, we weren't able to really make steady progress forward. So I'm curious if in this last stint we saw something any different.
So last Thursday, when we were out, we were provided a document from a electrician that they had chosen to come out and, I don't want to call it inspect the property. I'm not sure what areas they looked at. They did provide an invoice. The invoice seems more of, yeah, rather than work that needed to be completed. It mentioned that breakers are all covered, there are spacers. When we went through, we found breakers that were missing panels, spacers, things like that. We also found a overhead heater that was installed. It sounded like they made contact with someone that could install it that was licensed. When they realized how much it was going to cost, they did it themselves.
Chief Richard said they did have, they did complete some cleanup of the activity.
Yeah. So there has been, there has been some considerable cleanup to the property. A lot of the debris that was on the south side of the building has been removed. There's still areas within the building that are cluttered with what I would consider garbage. For the north side of the building where the cars were, that, that would be Chief Richard's
So if it's on the National Historic Registry, are there any other rules about how that building needs to be maintained?
I, I'm not aware of that.
I don't think that's his call. I mean, that's, there's...
Yeah, we're just looking at it.
That registry is kind of long. So we, with, what I'm hearing then is that we can basically stop all work that's going on in that structure?
Correct.
And then they would have to, you know, go through, get the conditional use, such and such, fix everything before, and that would, they'd have to fix everything before a conditional use permit would be allowed?
Correct.
Okay.
And is it your recommendation that that building not have people in it because of the structural unsoundness, the carbon monoxide, the lack of electricity, no heat, et cetera?
The carbon monoxide is, I guess, the least of my concerns. Like it says in the report, the, it's a range that, that it was monitoring. What is permissible by OSHA, these levels were under. So it was more a note of we did find it while we were in there. In my professional opinion, I don't feel that the building could be brought to satisfaction completely. I think once something starts, it partially gets finished or it doesn't get done correctly. We've kind of already proven that we have requested to have permits be taken out and have Wisconsin licensed electrician do work. They have elected to do all of it themselves.
And that's not, I don't know, legal is the right word, or, I mean, it's a, I don't think, you know, even homeowners, I mean, aren't supposed to do a lot of electrical or gas work or anything like that themselves, you know? So it's a, that's a, you know, I'm all for saving Miami. That's, that's, I'm kind of thrifty myself, but in order to do this, to get it to be able to function as a business, I mean, it's got to be done correctly.
Correct.
So you heard the number of inspections that Mike has performed on this in the past, and, and Drew made that statement to us. He said that, you know, they just don't have the time and the manpower to continue doing this, and it would go back onto an annual inspection if we did the routine. But he said if, depending on our direction, they would come out, depending on that they completed the work. So...
So you're basically saying the owner isn't doing what you're asking him to do?
Correct.
Okay.
And meeting code is meeting law. Those are the same things.
I don't know, a side note or pertinent to this, but this, the owner has owned that structure since the mid-'80s, and we've had issues, there was issues back then. We've looked at some of the old meetings and documents and stuff like that, and there's stuff that, it's, it's not just a recent issue that, with that building. And, you know, I know with Brian and his agency and stuff like that, they've tried. Fire department has, has done what they can now that we're, and we're at that level now where it's, we got to make a decision. And, and honestly, I, I'm, I'm in favor of shutting everything down down there until you can get it back up to code. Any further discussion? Questions? I guess we can entertain a motion?
Yeah, we can take comments, certainly. Come on up, Tim. Yep.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Mike.
What's your name, sir? Yep.
Luke McKee at 235 Monroe Street. But the main point that I wanted to make is the list of five things. When he went over that, it made it seem like we hadn't completed that, which the list of five things aren't, or which of those aren't complete, because I believe we got those figured out. And then on, it seems like that is one big piece of it, but all throughout it, it seemed like they were down talking quite a lot about what we had done. And we've made pretty massive improvements where we have pictures and the stuff with, most of the electrical work that needed to be done was just removing stuff, which we have removed tons of it, which it isn't against any rule to, and they should be able to tell you that most of it was, in fact, old wiring that they wanted removed. And another piece with it, too, is we were just told about that second floor structure stuff, like a few days ago, when we set up an inspection, and it was because we had started clearing most of it out of there, that they had even brought it up, that, and that it definitely isn't just garbage thrown all over. It was more messed up than usual because we'd just gotten two dumpster loads of Paul's molds out of there, which it's mostly just molds that he's been storing for, that he makes the bridges and stuff out of. But it, I don't have much more to say. The main thing is it seems like it was down talked quite a bit, the work that we have done. And we also do have a electrician coming on Thursday to complete the work that they asked us to do when they were here a few days ago for their inspection. And we have confirmation that that electrician will be coming in Thursday to do the work. And it doesn't seem, from what we've gotten from them on that inspection, it didn't seem like there was some undoable list like it was sounding like it. I, whatever we get on this list, we're going to get done. And like that letter that we have heard quite a bit about, we've never saw that or heard about that or knew anything about the letter, which is, I, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Well, Luke, I want to comment, and I thank you for your, for your, your update, because the chief was right. He did say you had done our work. But, you know, up until that point, we had a number of inspections performed by Mike and by Brian, and we just narrowed it down in the public safety meeting, just to that five, just to give you time to work on those. They come back and do another inspection, make, you know, to show that we've seen progress. That was back in June. And, and, you know, we took until, you know, January, February to come back, you know, six, seven months later to see the progress. And, and we were just trying to help on public safety side, right, Amy, to say, hey?
Yeah, yeah. And if, for example, we could have had five things every month.
Every month.
That would be 35 things by now. But just to get that five, and also when we had the request to have licensed personnel do the work repeatedly, that was not done either. And so...
And I think you, no, we, we said to you, you know, we want to work with you. You know, we talked about that on the public safety side of it.
We appreciate the effort, but it feels like it's just going on continually, and we are not getting to an end point. And so it has to be dealt with differently is kind of what the Safety Committee came to the realization of.
At the last public safety meeting, I asked you point blank about your, who's your, who your electrician that you're using? Is he a certified Wisconsin electrician? And he didn't say he was. I'm going to ask you again, point blank.
Yes, he is.
Who is the electrician that you're using?
I believe his name, or his name's Austin with Mr. Sparky.
And is he a Wisconsin electrician?
Absolutely. And they already know that, too, but he's the one coming back on Thursday again.
Well, I'm sorry, you haven't been getting updates from the owner of the building. That's on him. You should be talking to him about that stuff.
Are they aware of your fire inspection report that we're looking at?
This has not been sent, of course.
Okay.
The most current one has not been, no.
Okay.
Because it just came to us since the last day. But they have been aware of all the other ones prior up to this point, Brian. So, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
And also before, I mean, you can do any work down there, you got to come up and apply for conditional use. I mean, that should have been done before you guys moved anything into that structure. That should have been...
You were denied.
That should have been done.
I have one more question.
You were what?
Yeah, well...
We were denied for our permits.
But you went ahead, did the work anyway, were doing the work anyway.
Not, that was to start up our business.
Well, right. And starting up the business is what the conditional use permit is about.
Well, exactly. I just don't think we really have started up our business like we intend.
Well, yeah, but you've got stuff in there, and there's work that's been, that's been done. I, we do know that. So, I mean, without a conditional use permit, you got to stop, well, we'll have a vote on that, I guess, you know? But, but then, we got one question?
Mary, yeah.
Yeah, one more question. Is anyone on the Public Safety Committee? No. And if not, maybe we can get the inspector back. Are there any other properties in the village that we have a letter that the fire department refuses to enter those?
We do not.
Not anymore.
Yeah, right, not anymore.
We got rid of one of those a few years ago, but, but, okay. Thank you, Luke.
Go ahead, Tony. Yep, yep.
Any work that's performed in there, you still need a building permit? And that would have stopped you from wiring all that stuff wrong. So you used the wrong kind of wiring in there, and that's what we called you on, on our end. So NM wire is for residential, not commercial or industrial. So all that NM wire that you guys ran has to be pulled out, and that, your electrician should know that. But you still have to apply for a building permit before he can come in there and do any work.
Thank you, Tony.
Any further discussion from the board? Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I move we have a stop work each in this location, 235 Monroe Street, until we can have proper, well, conditional use is applied for the business they have in there. And second, that they perform the work that has been put upon them by the fire marshal and our building inspector.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Let's do roll call on this, Tim.
Yes.
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 Okay, so the stop work or use has been voted on and approved. So until you get the work done, you guys shouldn't be working in there.
And you need a permit to do the work.
And the permits, yeah. Make sure, yeah, you get the permits, because there's, we don't have constant inspections and stuff like that, but the, we are keeping an eye on that property. Tim, you had something?
Yeah, fire marshal, Mike, so would this document about the stop work and stop usage procedures be given to them? I could provide that to them, or?
No.
Nope. Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You have, you gave me an earlier document that we talked about earlier tonight about the stop usage document.
That's just a document from, from the state of Wisconsin.
Okay, okay, okay. No, we just, this procedure that we talked about. Yep. Okay.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you are?
Okay.
Tony?
So you guys would like us to go put these on the doors of the building tomorrow?
Absolutely.
Yep, that's the activity that we talked about. Yep, Tony, yep.
I just wanted to be clear.
Yep.
Can I just ask a quick question? So even though the stop order is there, they can still have a contractor go in to redo the fixes, right?
Correct.
It's not like nobody can go in. Can they still have, like, the licensed electrician go in and...
Yeah, so they can only be, they would only be allowed in the building to work on corrections. They would not be able to do any work.
Yeah.
I guess that would be a question for Chief Richard, whether if they are doing work, if that's considered trespass.
There's a gentleman in the back. His hand up. Please step forward, state your name, where you're from.
Yes, I'm Ali Galicki, and I guess I've owned this building since 1982, I believe. And I've been doing work on my own old cars. I don't do it for other people, but I have my own cars there. And, and then also, Paul, at... Um, and I don't quite understand if I can't work on my cars in the building, or what exactly?
Yeah, that's the intention of stop work, Lee, is basically you have to make the improvements to your building before you can do any additional work out of your so-called business that you've been performing out of there, so.
Okay, well, we have removed all the tires from the building. I don't think there's ten tires in there anymore. And we've cleaned out the outside almost completely. Um, uh, we tore out all that old electrical wiring that was incorrect, I guess, or not used anymore. Um, it seems like an awfully harsh thing to do is, and create a huge financial hardship if, if that building can't be used. Can Paul work in there, or?
Um, it's, it's the entire building we're looking at. Uh, it's what we're looking at, Lee. That's the direction that came, you know, we got from our inspecting, we got from our fire marshal, and, uh.
So, just so I understand, is this just on us, or are there other people in the village or whatever that, um, if there's any violations of codes, they also have to stop work? Or is it just us?
Well, it's, it's a timeframe that's, this has taken this long, Lee, to get this corrected?
Well, we've been, honest to God, doing, the biggest problem of real safety in that building was rubbish and, uh, this old electrical wiring and the tires and everything. All that stuff is gone. And it just seems unfair that, that we've worked so hard to do that. Um, it does cost money, and it's a reality. Uh, it, it just seems unfair to just tell us that we can't do any work there. Um, so I don't know what Paul's gonna do. He's in the middle of a huge contract. And, I mean, we, it seems to me we should get thirty days or something, least so people, so we can, I'll borrow the money or whatever we have to to get, we do have electrician coming. We've got a fire safety company coming to check to make sure, from an objective professional company, that we're meeting all fire safety codes with exit lights and with fire extinguishers and open paths and, um, openings around, uh, electrical boxes, that sort of thing. Um, and the building doesn't really have any structural issues. I mean, there, there was, uh, some of the old roofing that they put a tarp up there and they put some, some, um, pallets on it just to hold it down from wind and that sort of thing. But generally, a lot of the roof is new, more or less, new, rubber. So I don't know, it just seems that there's an awful lot of pressure on here. Um, and I think it's to force us to sell the building. And, I mean, it, it's, it doesn't seem fair to me that, that.
Lee, as far as the chair of the public safety, like I said, I've been doing this for, it's been a couple of years now since I've seen this. And I'm leading this on the public safety side of it. When our fireman won't, will not go in.
I didn't understand the last sentence.
I'm, I'm leading this on the public safety side of it, when the fireman won't go in your building if there's a fire.
But we took all the tires out, there's no.
There's still, there's still conditions that, that, that it's not safe for a fireman to go inside. That's a key thing there.
We should be able to at least get some other public, um, official that isn't, have vested interest in this whole thing to, to take a look. Because if you, if we had a tour with you people in there, you would not see things that you thought were unsafe. That's just true. I, I can't believe that, that you can shut us down like this and without any recourse on our part at all. It just doesn't seem right. I don't know how else to put it. I mean, if even, even the building inspector said to us, Lee, why don't you sell this building? And a guy wants to buy the building. I think you guys just want a lot of real estate taxes coming in and a lot of other money coming in. And that's the way it appears.
Point of order.
Pardon me?
Point of order on the purpose of this.
Yeah. Um, we, I guess, Lee, you know, as a board, we voted, but I mean, the, the main concern, of course, is the public safety. We have two gentlemen here who are pointing out those safety issues. And that's, that's the main purpose of my, my, uh, motion, was to basically bring this thing up the code, to get, to get, you know, the conditional use and activity in place.
So what is the timing? If I get electricians in there?
You just got work, you, you could.
No, wait. The electricians come.
They gotta get a permit first.
You have to get a permit first.
You can't just bring an electrician to start working. There's a process of how you have to do this. You have to get a permit first.
So, so can I get a, um, can I get a permit tomorrow?
Yeah, you can come in, yep.
They need to talk to the building inspector's office, they do that.
Yep. So can I get a, a electrical, um, building permit tomorrow?
The, the main issue with all of this is, we've been talking about this for two years, um, in June even more specifically. So at some point, we have to do something. And I know you're claiming that, you know, we're just throwing this upon you. It's not thrown upon you. This has been brought up multiple times. We've talked about, other people have talked about it. You guys have done a very good job of working on some of it, but we can't just let now, okay, this is the time I've learned my lesson. We, we just can't wait for that.
I don't think you could show me a piece of paper saying that the things that are the big issues now, like, which I think is mainly the wiring, I take it, because all the tires are out and the, and the unregistered vehicles are off the property. Um, I don't think you can show me, I didn't receive a letter, I didn't receive a notice, I was, we did get something mainly to clean up the garbage on the south side of the building, which has been there for decades. Um, and we did clean that up. If it's, if it's just the electrical, which it seems to be, but I'd have to know that, I deserve to have a clear statement of what I'm obligated to do and how I can go about doing that.
Uh, Lee, we got the list of the violations from the inspections, and, uh.
When was that made?
Uh, a couple of days ago.
Well, that has not been sent to.
We just got that.
What's that? We just got this?
No, just you guys so far.
Okay. But, uh, there, there is more issues than that. Plus, you've had that building since the mid-eighties, and there's been issues with other boards and, and requesting you to do certain things down there, and you have not complied. And, and right now, we're at the point with this board that, yep, you said you've cleaned stuff up, but according to this, that, that what we're looking at is, uh, it's maybe not all completely done. So what we're trying to do is that, look, you've had opportunities to do this, and we've gotta act on this right now because it is an issue. I mean, we've, like I said, we've only had one other structure that, uh, that, uh, the fire department would not enter. You know, I mean, I've never seen an order like that, you know, but that, uh, that, you know, that, oh, they'll put water on it from the outside. No, there, there's issues there that, that you've had time to address over the years, and it has not been done.
But I should have been given some kind of clear warning that, because we've been working this whole time, and that's the truth. And, and you can go, if you come there, any of you come there and actually physically look at the inside of the building or the outside of the building, there's nothing that's gonna jump out at you and you say, this isn't safe.
Can I be recognized?
Mary?
I wonder if we should make another, uh, another board motion to ensure that the owner of the property receives the report with the corrections that need to be done by the licensed inspector, which I know is going to happen, but then we can close discussion on this and move forward.
Yeah, well, we've got, well.
And we could also detail the list of things he needs, a building inspe, I mean, a building permit, the work, and then cut.
Right, because there may be things that aren't even identified, that the licensed contractor and/or licensed people in each of the various areas identify that we aren't even aware of. I mean.
I don't know if these are working, but I can't hear.
Oh.
So, I agree. I mean, I don't think it takes a motion, it's basically detail the fact that we need to present to him the list that was, uh, we'll present to you the list that was done on the last inspection. We'll give you the list of activities that you need to perform, getting your building inspection, getting the work done, and then coming back with, uh, your conditional use permit, which will be another inspection by our people to do.
So I guess I just.
Second.
I feel so much, let's say, tension, or I wouldn't say that it's necessarily unfair. If, if there's things I, rules I've broken, then these things are normal. It just seems to be coming on so heavy without any human understanding of us trying to do what you want us to do. I mean, if I, if people had infinite amounts of money, I can understand, all that can work that way. But that isn't the way the world is. And, um, I mean, I've been restoring and owning historic buildings most of my life. And this is the first time I've ever had, been inundated with this kind of pressure. And I, I mean, it, I don't know what the situation is legally. Uh, I don't know if I go see a lawyer, do they tell me, wow, there's not, you can't fight city hall? I don't know what they're gonna tell me. But it just seems to me that there should be some sort of fairness here, that's all. Because I swear, if any, I'll invite any of you in, and if you promise to come in with an open mind, not decided that, that we're somehow intentionally breaking regulations or something, there's not gonna be anything glaring. Yes, if you get into the exact codes, whether Romex, electrical wiring, uh, we did talk to electrician, and they said, yes, Romex is allowed. It, it can't be, I can't remember, um, Nick talked to the electrician. Uh. Yeah, they said it can't be exposed.
It's relevant to what we're talking about, guys. You didn't follow the proper steps. We're moving forward. Our announcements are made. We hear you, but we're gonna send you the list. We're not gonna do this off of you talk to someone, talk to someone. We've made our, we've made our, our decision. We're moving forward with that decision. Sorry.
You'll get listed, a list, Lee, of everything that needs to be, you know, detailed. And then, you know, what you need to do to complete it, as far as permits.
But I'm guaranteed that I can get the permits immediately to do that, that work.
You have to call the building inspector tomorrow, the office, and talk to the office.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, well, that's all I can do then, I guess.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, Lee.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
And Tony, uh, Luke, Lee, I mean, uh, it's, uh.
And Brian's here for.
Ellers. Ellers, yeah.
Is that where we mail things to you?
No.
Why don't you put that out?
Brian's not gonna mail.
Okay, uh, we'll move on to item, uh, five, which is a presentation or a discussion with, uh, Ellers. Uh, who's ready to go?
Yes, please.
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 You got it.
Yeah, back up.
State your name.
Good evening to you all. Uh, Brian Rallaby Thaler is also here with my colleague Josh Lowell. Um, we, uh, went through a little bit of a process here recently where, um, the village received an upgrade to its rating. And congratulations, by the way. But, um, in doing all, going through all of that, Melissa felt might be a good idea just to kind of present that to you and go through a little bit of the details, um, help you understand the dynamic there, but, um, also just kind of have a, maybe a Q and A if that mattered to any of you, and wanted to kind of walk through any things that you might have questions about, um, curiosities or other comments. Generally speaking, you know, we're not just debt or bond experts, but we, uh, kind of live and breathe Wisconsin fiscal matters for the most part, so we like to consider ourselves experts in that regard as well. Um, that even gets as extensive as things like budgeting, levy limits, uh, fiscal planning, et cetera. So, um, we do a range of things over and above just bond work. And we'd be happy to delve into any details that you'd like. And maybe I'll just start with kind of walking you through, um, the change in your bond rating, because really, you just issued bonds last year, right? And, um, we got a rating, and then not that long after, outside of a regular debt issuance, um, the same agency that rates your debt, uh, came to us and said that you were under review, uh, for a possible upgrade, which is great. Uh, but functionally, uh, Moody's Investor Service is the bond rating agency that gives a credit opinion and assigns, uh, what I'll call an alphanumeric rating, right? And from the scale, we've talked about this before, at the very top is triple A, then there's a category of double A. There's three number grades within the double A category. Below that is the A category, again, three letter grades. Um, and then you get into what is generally called the triple B level, but for Moody's is B double A, and again, three letter grades. Um, that makes up the investment grade category. Everything below that, uh, is generally, you just don't get a rating at all if you can't meet any of those criteria. So heretofore, you have been at the A1 level, uh, which is very reasonable and strong for a community of your size. Um, and with the recent upgrade, you've moved to double A3. And so nothing really happened, uh, between the point where a rating was assigned and the recent upgrade, other than the methodology that Moody's uses. They did some updates. They do this periodically, about every five, seven years, ten at the most, and they review their methodology. Um, and they gave some additional, uh, credit and/or preference to, um, smaller communities that are near, uh, population and economic centers. Um, and so you already were a strong A1 with fundamentals on a financial basis, uh, but your presence and relationship to, to not just say like Hudson, but the Twin Cities Metropolitan area, um, was viewed as a, a strong positive in your regard. And so, um, after reviewing again and kind of going through their updated methodology, uh, we did go through a fairly extensive call with them, just like we were going to seek an update to the rating, uh, just to kind of allow them to do their diligence. And, um, as a result of the change in methodology, specifically, we did migrate up to the double A3 rating, and so now we're in the double A category. Um, oftentimes we get questions, you know, what, how far could we go on the scale, where could we arrive? And I would argue, you're probably right around the max under the methodology. Perhaps you could get to maybe a double A2. Um, size and TWO, not TO, um, size to some degree is a limiting factor. Uh, if you had even stronger financial metrics over a period of time, um, perhaps you could get an upgrade from here. Uh, but really, you're probably at about the threshold for where you would consider yourself in the spectrum of where they look at credit, um, and, which is pretty extensive. It's not just Wisconsin. You're compared, uh, to some degree across your Wisconsin peers, but also nationally, uh, when they look at data sets, um, you know, it's, I'd say it's about eighty to eighty-five percent. Uh, statistical numerical, when they kind of run you through their, their black box, there is a bit of an art to it, that's the other fifteen, twenty percent. Um, and so they make adjustments, uh, and they also have discussions with their internal teams to kind of, uh, turn the dials here and there a little bit, outside of what they call their scorecard, so. Uh, but certainly, double A3 is a very good rating. Um, and so, um, probably would have done a little better with our rates if we had that rating at the time, but only marginally so. And, and by marginally, I mean, uh, a few basis points, and a basis point is point oh one percent. So there's real money there, uh, over time, but, um, I wouldn't consider that to be like an order of magnitude better in terms of overall interest cost. Going forward, you will absolutely get the benefit of double A3, uh, but you're just not a frequent issuer, which is fine, too. Um, you know, you've done well, uh, paying for things with cash and then borrowing sparingly as you've needed to for, uh, major infrastructure, et cetera. I know you do, you know, smaller bank, bank debt for some equipment acquisition and whatnot, which you don't need a rating for, um, and would never pay for one in that regard either. So, um, over time, this will accrue to your benefit, and, um, I don't really see anything in front of us presently that would argue somehow that rating is under pressure and was, and then, you know, go down to an A1. They're loathe to upgrade a credit. It's very hard to get an upgrade, so they, they do pretty much everything they can to deny it, uh, from you, but, and once you're there, uh, it stays pretty sticky, provided that things don't change materially. So I will pause there and see if there are questions on the specific topic.
Did you say how often that is reviewed, that, that, that Moody reviews that rating and completes that?
Um, your rating specifically is typically reviewed at the time we issue debt, and then every two to three years, they will do what's called surveillance. So outside of a normal debt issuance process, they will essentially contact, uh, staff, this being Melissa in this case, um, as administrator, and just say they'd like to schedule a discussion. Um, you're required as, um, as a part of your bond issue to post, uh, financial information annually, basically your audited financials. Uh, they have access to that, they can review that at their leisure. Um, you would never know whether they are or not, and sometimes, um, they'll pick it up, look at it, if something changes, they'll want to call. Otherwise, they, they basically commit under their regulatory stricture to review credits on a roughly two to three-year basis, just to keep them fresh.
Good, thank you.
Questions or discussion from anyone?
All crickets. You did a really great job.
If not on that topic, we can certainly open it up to anything and everything else that you'd like.
So we've had residents question how we run certain things in the finance side, which is totally just. I mean, we welcome that, you know, that, those questioning. So in your point of view, take away this AAA3 rating, whatever, is there any other way we, you know, things we should do differently in how we're running our financial side of?
Yeah, my comments will be limited to what I know, right? I'm not here for every meeting, and I'm not here for finance committee discussions or other conversations that go on. So, you know, I'm fairly intimate with, you know, I can look at a set of audited financials and pick them apart pretty quickly. Plus, you don't have a ton going on as far as the very nuanced aspects of trying to deciphering things. So, you know, a lot of times, communities will have various TIF districts, so tax increment financing districts, you know, your enterprise funds, your water and sewer utilities, you're not really the provider, you're kind of the retail end of the spectrum, for the most part, so there's less complicating factors there. So when I scan over how you look, so to speak, financially, you show very strong. I mean, obviously, you're a smaller tax base generally, but you have, you know, fairly well-run operation financially, you're in a good place, you've all been very good stewards, as well as prior boards, of how you utilize debt. Your fund balance, or basically what you have accumulated over the entire existence of the village, is strong in relationship to what your annual budget is. There's kind of a ratio that you look at there, and you've typically been somewhere in the 70-plus percent range. That ebbs and flows over time, but you seem to have done a fine job managing the financial resources of the village. So that's typically my perspective. On a day-to-day basis, I don't know as much as far as kind of the governance structure, any policy considerations, what your budget process looks like, that's far more granular. You know, typically, for most Wisconsin communities under levy limits, there are only a handful of decisions that you can ultimately make when it comes time to budget. Very rarely do places not max out what their allowable levy can be, right? So the state gives you literally a two-page sheet. On the front of it, it tells you, this is the, what's called the net new construction number, which limits the percentage increase to your base levy. You can make adjustments to the base levy based on a handful of things. The most common is debt service, and so you have the ability to levy an unlimited amount for debt service. The rest of your levy is largely limited to the restrictions that are placed in front of you. And so as far as, I know you've taken the max over time, which has been rather nominal, but for maybe the last couple of years, has been a little more activity across the state in terms of that net new construction. But beyond that, your known quantity is really revenues, and then you have to manage the expense side, I think more specifically, which is a lot of sausage making, I'm sure, on all of your parts, and tough decisions need to get made. But beyond that, your debt is very low, you do have some debt service you make adjustments for, but in terms of managing that, you seem to be fine in that regard. So that's probably as much visibility as I have personally into kind of the day-to-day business. And, you know, when you get to the capital discussion, that's probably an interesting one, just because you do have some latitude there, only because you have the ability to borrow. And then to me, it gets into, is there some kind of a plan? Are you thinking about how you're structuring your debt to accommodate the tax impact, those sorts of things? You know, that's where we start to get a little more dialed in on some forward-looking things, more so. But, you know, typically, including Melissa, if people have questions, our clients anyways, they just call and ask, and we talk about it, and they'll take that back to their communities and talk with their elected officials and committee members and kind of hash it out on their end, versus more formal, what I would call financial management planning process, where we are physically engaged for a fee and do like a five to 10-year forecast, incorporating all of the various aspects of the budget, build a bunch of assumptions around what allowable levis are going to look like, use of cash, et cetera.
Good, thank you.
Anyone else?
So I had some questions about our maintenance of our debt payments and how those, the decreases that we've had in 2021 and 2022, which were, ended up to be around $60,000, if that would have impacted our levy capacity, if we were able to maintain that, that at the level that it had been? Because our budget actually has gone down.
Sure. When I think about your total levy and the budget in relation to that, I really put it into buckets. So one bucket, I have debt service, and that's primarily because you can levy an unlimited amount, so it's outside of the constraints of levy limits. The rest of the levy is constrained in a far greater fashion. So if you have debt that you've paid off and it's retired, your levy may go down. Now, that has no impact on the allowable levy. So if I were to walk you through the worksheet, I have a perfect mental image, because I look at it all the time, and I don't have it in front of me, but the top of that page starts with what your prior year's levy is, all right? And then subtracted from that is what you put in for an adjustment for debt service. So then you have what I would call your base levy, which is subject to the limit. And then the net new construction percentage is applied to that, and it is physically printed on the document. It's not something that anybody here figures out, the state tells you exactly what that is. And so then you do the math, and you figure out what your maximum unadjusted allowable levy is, and then you add to that what adjustments are available to you. In your case, probably the only one you have is debt service. I know there's a lot of talk around the library and what adjustments might be available for that, that sort of thing, but let's set all those complicating factors aside. If you just look at debt service, you add it on, and then that's your maximum allowable levy. Next year, it comes off, and you add it on, and it comes off. So it has no impact on what I would call the base levy, or what you're using to fund your operating and capital budget that you're looking at regularly. And when I say capital budget, I mean what you're spending cash on, essentially, on a pay-as-you-go basis, out of your unadjusted levy. There's always the opportunity to potentially borrow for capital, but it will increase the levy, there's no doubt about that. And so you have to have some idea about how you want to manage impacts around that as well. But it has no practical impact on what you are allowed to levy for, really, the operating side of the budget, and what you use as cash to pay for equipment projects, et cetera, on an annual basis.
So you're saying there's no way we could have maintained our levy by managing our debt service?
You can always, you have the latitude as a board to approve debt, whether it be general obligation notes or bonds, and so, yes, the debt service can go on the levy without limitation. And so there is the latitude for you to do what you will in that regard, and you could issue debt for a valid purpose, and then that debt service would go on as an adjustment. And it can go as high as you'd like, really. And the unfortunate thing around levy limits is it has pushed some communities, cities, counties, and villages into a higher use of debt to accommodate their infrastructure and equipment needs, just because things are going up in price, but your levy can only go up, say, 2%, 3% at most over recent history. So there has been that tension, but, you know, there is no impact to the base levy from debt service, but yes, you can absolutely, to some degree, manage the levy by issuing debt and then taking on the associated payment related to it. I also want to make a distinction between the tax levy and the tax rate, right?
Yep.
The two move sometimes independently, depending upon how valuations move, and changes over time, and to some degree, assessed values. It will get spread differently as well, even though all property classes are taxed at the same rate, their values don't all move at the same pace either. So this last year, residential real estate values were up materially higher than commercial, industrial, et cetera. And so what happened, practically speaking, is even if levies really didn't go up a lot, the residential taxpayers absorbed more of the tax burden, really across the entire state, it wouldn't be anything local.
So is there any way for us to capture the levy capacity that we've lost?
I wouldn't characterize it as being lost, because you can absolutely levy for additional debt service. So you have the same, or hopefully more, going into the next year, base levy authority that you would have started with. So if it was lost, you'd have a hard time getting it back. You can decide to not take the maximum allowable levy, and you can potentially get it back at a later time if you make that decision, but it requires action of the board and sometimes unanimous or supermajority, depending upon how much of it you want to get back. So that could be a complicating factor, but you really lost nothing in that regard, because you can absolutely, you could levy the same amount that you did in the prior year for debt service if you chose to issue debt and there was a corresponding payment due in the next year.
So when we purchase things out of our unassigned funds that we could, that would be capital expense, would that be a way to increase our levy limit a little bit? Because we're, you know, we're buddying up against, we had $5,000 increase last year, which really isn't enough to maintain staff salaries, to maintain services, to deal with a growing community on a long-term basis, if that's what we're facing. So is there ways that we can do that by, by taking those smaller loans without having to, you know, issue big bond debt?
I'll start with the use of unassigned fund balance. That will have no impact on your levy authority. I'm always cautious about using existing balances to pay for things like operating costs, because essentially, you're taking on the cost, and all of you as a board are making a decision every year to appropriate that money. What you're really potentially doing is creating a hole in your budget in the future. So if you decide, our levy authority, set aside the debt services a million dollars, and we've got 1.1 million of expenses that we're going to approve in the budget, that $100,000 is going to come from somewhere else, likely cash. And now you've created a kind of a baseline expenditure budget that is a higher level, and your levy authority may not get there, and you don't have unlimited cash. So eventually, you could find yourself in a tough spot, or you're going to have to cut the budget back to something that's feasible from a revenues and expense profile perspective. As far as issuing debt, you always have the ability to issue up to the statutory maximum for general obligation debt, which is 5% of your equalized value. You're nowhere near that, so that you're not in peril of exhausting your debt authority. There is always the payment attached to that, and so that is one way to fund additional capital and take on a higher levy, because it's not limited under law. And so that does provide the ability, potentially, to take on, say, small amounts of debt to pay for projects, and then you can increase the levy to make the debt service payment as a result.
I just want to make a comment that we don't use use of available funds for operating expenses. I've always stressed that we don't do that, because exactly that, you can get yourself in trouble, because you're using that money to pay operating expenses, and then the next year, all of a sudden, your use of available fund account is down, and how are you going to keep supporting that? So yes, we don't ever use it for that, it's usually one-time purchases.
I would even extend that to, say, regularly recurring equipment purchases, so not just capital, I would say more like absolutely more one-time capital expenditures that are not likely to occur in a, you know, reasonable amount of time after that expenditure. Because if they are recurring costs, if you're having to buy a new piece of equipment, you know, every two, three, five years, just based on use, you may not have the ability to really do that on a continuous basis just by using cash, so.
And we use assigned funds. We usually, at the end of a budget year, when we kind of know how much money we have, the board will approve, you know, setting aside, say, 20,000 in the public works, for vehicles, public works fund, vehicle fund, and then the public, our police department fund, to purchase those vehicles, so we're not using use of available funds.
Yep, that's absolutely common practice, obviously allowable, and so the way you get there is through budget surplus, right? And some years, you have bigger ones than others, or you have none, or you have a deficit. So, you know, again, that's something that's very common to do, but not always reliable. But that's the same dynamic every single taxing jurisdiction is facing.
So I think it's important to kind of reiterate that we have the base that you talked about. The net new construction's automatically added on to that. I can't take it off, it's already populated on the form. The only difference is the debt, like you said, varies it. So even if we take on more debt, yes, that raises a levy, we're not taking from the operating, because that higher levy is used to make that payment.
That's correct, and there's no free lunch.
We're not making operating expenses.
If your levy is higher, people are paying more in taxes. I mean, that's just the practical reality of it. You know, you're elected to make those decisions in terms of how you're spending the money and how you manage that. And that levy limit worksheet doesn't do anything than tell you what the maximum allowable levy is. It doesn't tell you what to do, other than you can't go higher than a specific number. You could go less if you want, but it's going to show up the next year, the actual will show up on the worksheet. Just what you arrive at is the maximum you can levy under law. If you levy too much, Department of Revenue will send you a letter, and they'll say, we are going to reduce your state trade revenues as a result.
So the debt is what we could, actually, the amount of debt we add is what we can fluctuate.
Largely, that's going to be your only option. The rest of the adjustments on that sheet are more like event-driven.
Yeah.
Transfers of services, those sorts of things are more episodic versus we need to borrow to pay for something, and therefore, we have a payment attached to it. An unlimited allowable levy for debt service makes sense, because it makes you a better credit. It also reduces your cost of capital. If the people that bought your debt knew that your levy for debt service was limited, it would cost you more to issue debt. That's just the practical nature of it, so.
So like for this budget, we had, I think, 28,000, I think it was close to that, and net new construction was added to our base. Yes, our levy only went up 5,000, but that's because our debt payments were down. But that base for operating expenses did go up by 28,000.
Sure.
Right?
I don't have the sheet, but, yeah, the logic makes sense.
I'm just making, I'm making sure I'm understanding it. So the base did go up by the 28,000 of net new construction.
Sure.
Overall, the levy only went up five, but that's because our debt payments were lower.
Went down 23.
So it didn't take 28,000, we didn't only go up 5,000 for our operating.
You still had enough to fund the budget that you adopted, and then, yes, the only real part of it that is variable is debt service.
Right. But we did get the 28, or whatever the net new construction is added to the base, which helps with the operating.
Yes, and that is permanent, right? So as long as you take it, as a board, you agree to, your levy's going to be the maximum allowable, that sticks, right? It's only when you don't take it that you have to, it has this ratcheting effect, and somehow, then you as a board also have to take action to try to get some or all of it back, which is a little more in-depth process. The only way to achieve a higher levy beyond making adjustments for debt service for most communities is affirmative referendum approval. There was probably the most of those in any year since the implementation of levy limits just passed election cycle.
Oh, really?
Across the state, yes.
Okay, anyone else? Any questions, comments?
Good stuff.
Yeah, a lot of it's related to, for the counties, a lot of it is roads and bridges, so the county highways, and then for local jurisdictions, cities and villages, primarily public safety has been probably the number-one stated reason. You know, you have to craft a question that goes before the electors, and typically has to say what you're going to spend the money on, and it's largely been related to public safety, and for counties, it's been to implement a larger improvements and replacements to roads and bridges.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I believe you've answered all the questions that we've had or concerns.
Yep, and we're on the spot, so if anything comes up after, Melissa will be happy to take what other questions you have, and I'll answer them, and I'll do a better job, because I get to do it in writing, so I do research.
You know, you've done an excellent job in your responses to anything that she's had, and she's complimented you guys on, so we're very happy with Ellers.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
Good to see you all.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Glad we got that recorded, I'll probably have to listen to it.
Friggin' town ones.
This is promotional to some degree, but it's also informational. We put on a lot of video-recorded sessions, educational content, that's all out there for free.
Okay.
If you want to get it, there's extensive things on things like fiscal planning, levy limits, there's a whole, you can sit through it, hour, hour and a half, so.
Is it on your website or YouTube?
Yeah, you can find it on the website, which will bring you to our YouTube channel.
Well, and I get emails that let me know that you guys have got stuff going on, too, so.
I have a few recently about public finance that are coming up.
Uh-huh. Well, very much appreciated.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Item six, new business from the board or staff and president's comments, and so I have a few to make. The first thing I want to do is I want to thank Patrick and our public works team for the absolutely great job they've done in keeping our streets open during the snow events that we had that piled up on us this season, in a most unusual, I mean, it was one right after another. one right after another, and as they've got that stuff done, they've done a great job of cleaning the edges and stuff like that and opening all the streets. I mean, I don't know how many people have commented on how great it is, I mean, they can actually see the curb, you know, and with all the snow that we got, that's a pretty huge accomplishment and stuff, so they've been very supportive. But again, with as much support as we've had, we've had a few folks that have, you know, and then I had to, I put something out on the, on the social media that people are getting, were getting in the, you know, out in front of the plows or waving the plows down and stopping them from doing their job, and then telling them how to do their job, you know? This is not only dangerous, but it's benef, you know, it's, it's not helpful. I mean, the guys we've got have, you know, obviously, they've done a great job, and I can't thank them enough for, for everything they've done. So I just hope that everybody will, you know, stay out of their way, let them get the job done. Hopefully, we won't get dumped on as bad as we have in the past. But, you know, if it happens, please pay attention to that. And then there's been other issues with vehicles parked in the streets longer than our permitted 24 hours, and that slows everything down, and then you get big piles and everything like that. So, you know, we've had discussions about possibly passing a snow event parking ordinance, you know, that, you know, other cities have. We've been resistant to that, because hopefully, people will pay attention, but, and I'd like to send out kudos to the folks down on Fifth Street, where we've got narrow streets and not everybody has off-road park, or off-street parking, and they went around and organized the folks that they, they do an odd even parking on their own, you know, that we didn't need an ordinance for that. And I would hope that maybe, you know, some of the other neighborhoods and folks will get together and say, all right, you know, let's try to all park on one side of the street and, you know, and then move them the next day, and we can get through that. But if we have to, you know, pass an ordinance in order to get that done, you know, during plowable events, we, the board will address that when we come to it. And after talking about winter, I was, and with the beautiful day we had out there today, I think everybody is thinking of spring. And more and more folks, I know in the village, as we, excuse me, walk around, drive around our growing gardens to help offset the higher costs of fruit and vegetables. And then to save money, you know, a lot of people start their own plants. And just as a reminder that, and we're going to be getting ours started right now, but onions, leeks, celery, and peppers can be started now, well ahead of the last frost, which is usually the end of April. But being the pepper festival capital of the, of the area, if you're going to start growing peppers from seed, you know, and it does save considerable amount of money buying a packet of seeds compared to going and buying the plants, but you can get them started now, and they need a little longer growing season. So, you know, it's, get them done by the, get them started by month's end, and you should have a pretty good start on your garden. And then one thing, as I was coming down here tonight, it's, it's, you know, with the darkness still setting in fairly early, we've got, you know, and I, it's great that everybody's out walking, their dogs, and walking for exercise, but, you know, I hope everybody would please dress with a little brighter colors, maybe something reflective on themselves or their dogs or whatever, because it is very, very hard to see, and people don't walk against the traffic, they walk with the traffic. So it's, it's kind of strange, but, but please try to brighten everything up, you know? We don't want, we've been very fortunate, we don't have anything, or haven't had any incidents, but I know I've had people complain that, hey, you just can't see them until you're right on top of them and stuff, so please pay attention to that. And I will pass to Melissa for, because I think she's got some election business coming up.
Yes, so a reminder that the spring primary election will be on Tuesday, February 21st. Polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. In-person absentee voting began today, and it will run through Friday, February 17th. And on the ballot is Justice of the Supreme Court and School Board. That's all I have.
Thank you, Melissa. Item seven is planned commission. They did not meet. Item eight is personnel and finance committee recommendations, claims approval requested.
Stan, can I move to approve the January 2023 non-recurring claims of $44,129, as well as the December 2022 non-recurring claims of $25,876.21, and the February 2023 non-recurring claims of $94,610.48?
Thank you, Kirk. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Any discussion or questions on the claims?
Melissa, anything out of the ordinary?
No, just under the capital fund for capital outlay, a lot of that, we're still getting bills in for the Wisconsin and St. Croix Street project and the Highway 35. We're getting some final bills trickling in. And then we had our spectrum insurance renewals for, all of our insurance renewals are some of the higher numbers, and then a couple capital equipment, things that were approved for the budget, such as the plow that was added on one of Public Works trucks, and then a speed display sign. And then I think that was most of it.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else got a question? Hearing none. Mary?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
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 And yes.
Thank you. Item B is 2023 staff and equipment service rates. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the service rates for staff and equipment 2023.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Jen? Thank you. Comments or questions?
Why did the equipment costs not go up?
So I give the list at the beginning of each year to Public Works and the Police Department and Nathan to determine what the rates are, and Patrick didn't have any increases for the rates for the equipment this year. I don't know if he has any comments on that or not.
I just go by state, what the state does, that's how I, you are.
Got it. So they're the state costs, we're maintaining them equal to the state costs?
Yeah, he compares it, I believe, yes, to the state list to make sure he's on track. And I believe the Police Department, all they have is the one squad car, and he didn't have any change to that either.
Okay. Anything else? Let's see, that's just a really great change. All in favor of the service rates as presented, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. See, item C is amend employee's handbook for retiree health reimbursement account. Discussion approval requested.
Stan, a move to amend the Village of North Hudson employee handbook to add language that the health reimbursement account may be used for IRS Section 213D eligible expenses in addition to premiums. An authorized village administrator sign the necessary documents with the national insurance services.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirk. Hearing none. All in favor of the amendment to the employee handbook, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Okay, Public Works is next on the agenda. Chair update, Brian.
Stan, we did not meet in January, and due to the election that Melissa just mentioned, our next Public Works meeting will be February 28.
Thank you. Item 10 is Public Safety Committee. Tim?
Stan, we did meet, but we have nothing to carry forward at this time.
Did I get the date wrong?
Yeah, we met in January.
Oh, we did?
Yeah, I watched it, yeah.
Well, he had nothing to bring forward. It was pretty quick.
I thought I saw notes, but I mean, that did nothing to bring forward.
Nothing to bring forward, sorry.
Public Safety has nothing to bring forward. Public Welfare did not meet.
Correct.
And how about your Park Board? Did not meet?
Well, we did meet in February, but I know it's not on this, but I just want to do a quick thank you to everyone for the Winter Fest. It was an absolute success. Patrick and everyone did such a wonderful job again. We definitely beat the numbers we did last year, and it's, it's always just a great event. They added a ton more stuff, and I just want to say thank you to all the people that were part of that. It kind of makes North Hudson what it is, so thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Kirk. All righty, then, the last, or item 13 is the board may convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, parant one, parant lowercase g, for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the Village of North Hudson who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategies to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or likely to become involved in with respect to Riverside Drive North Duplex Lift Station. And can I go with the second one, too, or not?
Sure, you can have two motions.
Yeah, and for the second item, the closed sessions with the above statutes for, was written or oral advice concerning adopted body with respect to litigation in which it is likely to become involved with, with the remaining EMS funds held by the City of Hudson. So is there a motion to go to closed session?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirk. All in favor of going into closed session, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Do we have to do one for the second one, too, Paul, or is that cover both?
I thought it covered both.
Okay, well, that's fine. I just want to make sure.
Yeah.